All right, so we'll go ahead and get started with the Finance Committee meeting. We have two items on the agenda. One being the process for the Shannon Grant and the other being an update on the ARPA Fund. So TJ, I will go ahead and turn it over to you.
So the who's about to share it, there isn't much update other than we're putting together a committee to set up an RFP. Just basically trying to get new partners in and get more partners involved. So we're going to be doing that. I don't know when we're releasing it, but.
Um, pretty much as soon as possible to meet the deadline.
So we have, so we've been meeting in with the Police Department and then everyone agrees we're going to put it back out to RFP for the first time in a while and not just go with the current partners that have been that way it's over the past. And so once we have that out, we will make sure that everyone is informed and get it gets it out to the folks that we want to bid on it.
All right, that sounds good. Um, when is the deadline for the Shannon Grant?
Uh, deadline, October ninth, October ninth, I believe is the deadline.
We're gonna have a real quick turnaround time.
Yeah, well, we that just, we just have to have a program narrative in by then.
We already have the budget.
Yeah.
We just need to have what?
Program narrative and budget?
No, just program narrative.
Yeah, we don't need budgets then, we just need a narrative.
Okay. All right, any questions from counselors on the Shannon Grant? All right, so we'll move to the ARPA funds. Um, just looking for update as to what's been decided as far as spending um, the some of the funding and where we're at.
Nope, so uh, there's been nothing new spent other than the merit program, which as the unions are agreeing to it, they're getting their payments. Uh, we had the IBPOs, Police Supervisors and DPW unions of this week and hopefully the rest can get those out quickly. Uh, as far as that, there's been nothing else allocated or set aside. Uh, the mayor is in the process of doing the listening tour for uh, the neighborhood councils that have been ongoing. And I know you have meetings scheduled in the upcoming weeks.
All right, um, TJ, is there like any internal lists that folks are requesting?
Nothing for department edge yet. We haven't opened it up to department edge. This has been more kind of a fact gathering.
We actually did get one from libraries.
Okay, I guess we got one from libraries. So, um, yeah, so what we're looking to do just for process wise is once we get the feedback and kind of get a sense of where we're going, we know we're going to be issuing the RFPs uh, as they relate to small businesses, to nonprofits, to housing, to some of the other areas that we're looking at. Um, the RFPs are going to be rolling, which means they're not going to expire. Uh, and that just basically gives people a chance to not feel like they have uh, to rush to get through what is going to be a toned down RFP. It's not going to be um, you know, a twenty page RFP. It's going to be a two-page RFP with some, you know, documents that co- coincide with it. And the goal is, once we get it, if it checks all the boxes and kind of fits into the ARPA guidelines, we will then uh, basically kind of check. And just keep that ongoing, uh, so folks that want to get that get in. Uh, but in addition to that, Chase Swan and the new unit we're creating there is going to provide technical assistance uh, to the folks that may have had a weaker or missing some information. So we're going to build up that wall and tell Chase, he's going to go and have them fix it. He will then go meet with the groups and make sure that they tighten up their proposals, so then they can be eligible.
That sounds good. Um, do we have a amount for the merit pays so far?
Total spent so far, I'm not sure because we have to process the DPW or the uh, police. But we anticipate the overall merit on the city side to be about four million dollars.
Is there any talk about this SPSI?
I've had numerous conversations with the superintendent and Dan Worwick and they uh, do not, uh, they are not allowed to use their funds on behalf of the SBS employees. So they have spoken about premium pay on behalf of the SBS employees. Uh, we have spoken on our side and you know, we do not, at this point, um, it could be upwards of twenty million dollars or more if we did every school department employee. And we're not prepared to kind of make that leap to, to do that. But what we want to do is talk about whether we should lobby uh, the legislature and the governor because they get five billion dollars of their own money. Uh, and if Desi's putting rules that it can't be spent for hazard pay, we might want to have a conversation with them. Um, you know, so that's kind of where we've been at. I've gone back and forth with Pat and Dan and you know, they're just not, you know, the way we kind of look at it is the school department has been, you know, getting their annual raises, their cost of living and you know, it was one of those things where we don't typically get an infusion of cash like this on the city side often. So that's kind of where we are at this point.
And you're not um, in any of the conversations with how they get their merit increases or anything like that, are you TJ?
For the school department?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I mean, they have their contracts that are all based upon uh, performance goals set out at the beginning of the year and that's how they get paid based upon those goals and how well they perform.
Yeah, okay. Any questions from counselors?
Um, yes. Um. Ah, ah. So you said we're not have, we're not in any conversations TJ to um, or you said at this point in time, we're not willing to spend the money on behalf of the school department. Is that for merit pays?
So the merit pay, the school department has not asked for it. They have a program. I've had preliminary conversations, just explaining to them what we've done and what we're doing and they said they don't have the funding for it. We said, okay, and we never offered up that we would spend ten to twenty million of our hundred twenty-three million we're getting on merit pay for the teachers or school unions or others.
And you said they haven't, they haven't asked either. Is that, is that accurate?
Not asked and you know, they just said we're not, we don't have the ability to do it. We're not asking for it. We, you know, we're, you know, we understand that we can't give merit raises. Um, and they haven't asked us to, you know, pay for it on our side.
And we, we, we don't see it or feel a sense of obligation to um, to see that those individuals that were working on the front lines get paid.
I see it as a school department got three hundred million dollars in asset fundings and other funding. And if they want to reevaluate the salary schedule, which they have done in their recent contract for the teachers and the parents, then that's the route they could take.
They got three hundred million, you said?
Probably, I mean, they got eighty-five million one round, a hundred twenty another round, and they just got another probably seventy or eighty million.
I guess my thing is, you know, it, it, it sounds like everybody's clear that it can't be spent from that money. Um, I don't know what that money can be spent on. Um, but it also seems clear to me that there are some folks there that ought to receive. Um, they ought to receive merit pay. And the idea of lobbying for them to receive um, merit pay to me um, to, to me, doesn't make much sense. I mean, if we're going to do that type of lobbying, we should have lobbied for everybody. Right? And then, you know, I think in our conversations with Pat Roach, um, you know, his was more about folks remaining at home and you know, I, I I guess it's, that's a plausible argument, but we certainly didn't use it when we were doing that for our non-bargaining employees on the city side. Um, so it just seems to me that folks ought to come together, especially for those, those people where it seems like a no-brainer. Um, you know, I know they're not asking as much as some other folks are on the school side, although I've heard from a number of union leaders that are, that are interested. Um, there are some folks that really assisted the city and um, you know, it just, just seems like they ought to be taken care of and we ought to feel that that is our obligation as well. Those are my two cents. Um. Yeah.
Uh, thank you.
No further questions.
Thank you. Counselor Gomez, anything?
No questions.
Okay. I mean, I just want to kind of echo that. I know that I, I would have struggled so much without so many administration on the school side with, when I had the four kids, why I still have the four kids, three of them attending Springfield Public Schools, managing that, managing technology, managing everything that they had to go through, losing books, getting, you know, just everything they had to go through and the administration did a great job on the school side. Um, assisting with everything that would happen from broken laptops to getting more supplies to the, to the students and parents and just like all the resources that was out there as far as like lunches and things like that. Um, I think that they deserve something and again, we, we get filled at those um, those responses and to say, well, school side got three hundred thousand, three hun- three hundred million dollars, but can't be spent on bonuses and city side isn't up to negotiate in twenty million or whatever the amount could be out of a hundred and twenty-three now. I thought it was a hundred and twenty-seven, but.
Uh, they reduced our, they reduced our direct allocation to ninety-three million instead of ninety-seven million.
Ninety-three, okay, so a hundred and twenty-three million. Um, they don't think that, that's a priority. Just really sucks to have to relay that information. Um.
So the, the conversation is that, you know, so we got a hundred and twenty-three million and this is to be transformative for the entire city, not just to be for premium pay. There's a lot of job creation, a lot of economic development, a lot of housing needs, a lot of small business needs. Um, there are a lot of things out there, some neighborhood development, revitalization, all that stuff that we're going to run out of money very quickly before we even do anything major that is transformative, similar to the tornado. And that is why the decision has been made that the school department can put it in the salary schedule. Let them put it in the salary schedule as they negotiate. I don't want to take twenty-something million off the table and then, you know, have me left with seventy million and then have that dwindle down to fifty million. And the next thing you know, we haven't really had the transformative effect of the city that we, we all want this. If I don't want this.
Talking um, is twenty-something, something million for everyone because I don't think that everyone would be eligible, right?
No, I get that. It's back of the envelope. It's basically saying that forty-five hundred employees roughly at five thousand dollars, that's twenty-two and a half million now. Could it be fifteen? Maybe? Could it be ten? I don't know. Um, but I'm just saying, we're talking worst case scenario, if that's how it goes and I, you know, I don't want to debate what teachers and administrators and everything on the school side did. My wife, you know, she was home with three kids and she had to do her own work. So I understand the hard work that goes into it. Um, so I don't want to sit there and debate and, you know, diminish what their, their positive impacts on what we've had. I just think at this point in time, the merit raises on the city side for that uh, well, the merit bonus on the city side for the fact that this is, you know, allowed by the law for us to do it and doesn't and the school department is, we've had a conversation about it a few times about what we're not doing and we don't intend to do it.
Do you think every?
They would do it if we said, well, give you a pot of money. There's no way they would say no.
Yeah. Do you think every department head on the city side deserved five thousand dollars?
I tell you, I'm not speaking for individuals, but I can tell you, I was here every day along with many, many of them.
You were in, you were in city hall every day? Because I've been to city hall.
Have you come to the fourth floor and buzzed in?
I came to the fourth floor.
Because I would do it every day.
Not every day, of course not, every day.
Not we guys, of course, but I mean, come on. This is a debate we're going to get.
I mean, I don't know. I don't know TJ. Um, Counselor Hurst? I, I'm not even talking about you specifically.
No, but I'm just saying, I'm not getting into specifics of individuals because that's not my call. That's the mayor's call as the department heads. Having said that, I know who I was in the trenches with every day.
Every day.
Yeah, I, I think, I think to that point, um, I think that's the same folk, that's the same thing a lot of folks are feeling on the school side, right? Like there were folks that were in the trenches every day. And you know, the idea that the, you know, I don't, I, I don't think we get into the weeds of, you know, who showed up and who didn't. I, I, I think that the idea that you created this, that's not you, but that people created this criteria, folks having to be here and, and or else you got deducted, probably didn't make any sense whatsoever. Um, or not a lot of sense, uh, because there were a lot of folks that could do their work from home and were working above and beyond. Um, or going above and beyond. There also were some folks on the school side that were present um, and going above and beyond. Uh, you know, I'd imagine that, did, did we take care of our IT, TJ, our IT department? I feel like I, I saw that they would take care. So, you know, when we start, when we start thinking about the school system and we look at their, you know, IT, uh, their IT department, you know, I, I, my understanding is they, you know, they were present. And the idea that, you know, they were making it so that, you know, that, that the students were able to do what it was that they were able to do and the teachers as well, in my opinion, was short of a miracle. And so I, I wouldn't really care where they were working from. The idea that they did it was impressive and it just seems to me like they should be compensated, whether we got a Rob Peter to pay Paul, whether the school department pays for something on our end that, that, that they can pay for out of the three hundred thou- three hundred million dollars that they got and we in turn use ours for COVID pay. I, I don't believe in the ARPA funding. When I read it, 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 it spoke about teachers as well. Um, and so they clearly meant it for it to stretch far beyond just city hall or the fact that it could stretch far beyond just city hall. And so I think we're really narrowing the scope and I think we're doing it to penny pinch on a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. And for me, that's problematic. And so I don't know who's got to come together, right? I know everybody's trying to pass the buck because nobody wants to spend the money. Um, and if the school department got double what you guys got but can't spend their money on bonuses, well, then we got to figure it out. And as a city and as a mayor who, who is chair of the school committee, you gotta do better. You gotta do better. Um, so I, we don't, we don't got a harp on it. I guess my, my final question, Madam Chair, is that um, uh, um, the timeframe TJ? Why do we have an arbitrary timeframe? Right? One would, from March first to June fifteenth, seems like the timeframe that we're going off of. Is that stated in ARPA, in, in the ARPA guidelines? Because I don't see it anywhere.
So the ARPA guidelines is when it's, when it passed, going forward there's a prospective law, not a retrospective law, so we can't look behind that date for anything that then use ARPA funds for.
So my, my, so you can look, you can look forward and I guess I'm, so.
Yeah.
You can look forward. And so I guess, you know, my thought process TJ is that why in the world we use this arbitrary um, timeframe ending date of June fifteenth makes very little sense to me, especially now considering that we, we, we're probably right back where we were on March third. You know, or March first, right now. And um, you know, and folks are, you know, they're just as much at risk, um, you know, or soon to be more so at risk considering the Delta variant than they were then. And so, you know, I, I, I just think, I think we might, you know, I know you can't include everybody, but I, I just think we need to, to reassess how it is that we're handing out this merit pay and the time period and how we're docking folks. Um, that, it, it just doesn't make sense to me. We could have done a better job. Thank you, Ma- uh, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I um, actually wanted to ask a question about free cash because I know from the school transportation side, we were going to have about fifteen million of free cash available. Um, has that number changed? Has it increased? Um?
I don't know. I have to check with Pat Burns. If anything, the number's probably gone up a bit, uh, just from closing out the year end.
Okay, so, so this is, this is what concerns me TJ and I, I know I've said it before. We will give out millions of dollars, right, for wrongful lawsuit cases. Right? Millions, like millions. And when it comes to like taking care of our professionals on the municipal side, we penny pinch. And then there's like no consequences for these officers. They're like protected. Well, I'm not going to say no consequences because I really don't know, right? Something could be happening, but I know that some of them still be on, are on the street. They have multiple claims against them. All these things are happening, but we still pay these dollars. We, millions of dollars. And yet, when it comes to taking care of employees that are probably doing the best that they can or close to the best that they can, we, we want to think of excuses of why not to pay them. That is really concerning to me. Now, if we did a better job with disciplining folks that are causing harm or causing taxpayers to spend more money and, and we were doing a better job at that, then this wouldn't be an issue for me. But for that reason, it is. We come to these um, meetings that we can't really discuss here in public and we hear about all these things. And we say that, oh, but this is going to be the last time because we're going to implement this then the third. Now, since I've been on the council, I've heard that at least twice. And then we still come back and we have these wrongful, Kate wrongful um, lawsuit cases with some of the same people and they're still here. And so I have a problem with paying that, but not paying for the folks that's doing the work for our children. To keep our children safe, to grow our children effectively, that is an issue for me. And so I.
I like paying police misconduct cases any more than you do. I mean, that's.
No, I, I'm not saying you like it. I, I'm saying that it's a problem that we had, we're doing that, yet we, we fight against paying the folks that are doing the right thing. But we still have to pay the wrongful suits regardless with no discipline. And I don't hear anybody talking about like how we're going to do better in that area.
Well, I'm not going to put words in the commissioner's mouth. I'm on our senior leadership team now. I've been working with her and we're working on a lot of uh, good stuff that, you know, when it becomes public, it's, I.
I mean, this hap- this has been happening long before this commissioner been in.
I understand that and the hands tied on a number of the things based upon civil service and some of the criminal cases and all that, so. I mean, I'm not the expert on it. I'm not going to get into it, but I understand the concern about all the money that is spent. We sent to you and Justin the amounts. I mean, it's staggering. Uh, you know, just the amount since two thousand fifteen, um, you know, but.
Well, I hope that those numbers change. I hope that they decrease and so that we will have more money that we can probably invest into folks that really deserve it instead of paying out based on the actions of folks that probably maybe don't even deserve to be.
I'm not, I'm not going to equate the two issues. I understand your concern on both ends, so I'm not going to equate the two, but you know, it's.
Well, I mean, that's just my, my feelings TJ, you know.
I get that. And I don't want to belittle, I don't want to belittle either because we're voting to pay payouts and you're asking for us to pay merit raises, you know, and there are arguments of both sides to both of them and I don't want to do the payouts. I would love to do the merits, you know, to a degree. But I also got to understand that I have a hundred twenty million dollars that the citywide needs. We've built every school that we can build for the school department. So it's kind of one of those like, I don't want to say it's our turn, but we don't usually get an infusion of cash on the city side. The way the schools are funded, everything goes to the school department, so. Uh, and I don't want to belittle what the teachers and the parents and the custodians and, and the tradesmen have done. Um, I know Justin talks about the frontline. I get what the tradesmen that, uh, did during it. They got overtime, which I know is better than nothing, but isn't a merit pay. But they got access to as much overtime as they could work during COVID. Custodians, they were in schools and I get that. That's good. You know, I know we talked about that, Justin, and you know, I don't know what the answer is. And then it's what point, where do you stop if you say yes to a couple of these unions? I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know where you, where you stop. And then you stop at fifteen million and next thing you know, we've spent twelve million on lost revenue, four million on ours, fifteen for the school department. And now we're at below a hundred million for doing substantial positive change for the city. And this is the suffer way. And that's why I'd love to be able to, whether it's lobby the state or whatever it needs to do, but we're waiting all this, trying to make the decision that makes the most sense, knowing that the school department can, like they did this year, they reevaluated the teacher's salary schedule to be more competitive with Western Mass because that's what the, the funds that they got could do then. And that's what we're suggesting. And I know it doesn't take away the constituents that are complaining about saying, hey, I worked my ass off and I didn't get a merit bonus, but I, you know, I understand that. They were getting.
I think I'll um, ask for the school department to um, come to the table so we can talk to them about what they can um, move around. Counselor Gomez, I'm sorry, Counselor Hurst, Counselor Gomez has his hand up and then I will um, circle back.
Uh, I just got a question. Is this money deposited in our accounts, cities' accounts?
We got half of it deposited, sent to us, uh, probably first week of April, second week of April.
And uh, what are we doing with the interest that this monies are earning in those banks?
Uh, it's less than one percent uh, right now, so we're not earning a, a lot, but that interest stays separate in a, in an interest-bearing account.
Uh, so this money, this interest will not be added to that?
I think it will be ultimately. I just had to talk to the treasurer on how he's calculating the interest and where, where he's putting it.
So, so Puerto Rico doing something like this just to earn the interest for a long time and then keep the interest. I hope that's not happening with us.
No, it's, it won't. It's, you know, the interest will go towards the programs, so. Thank you.
So even if it was like point five percent, that's still in the six hundred thousand dollar range or something like that. That does not pennies that can go to or something, so.
No, I didn't say pennies. I just say, you know.
You said less, less than one percent. That's not really a lot. That's a lot.
Not at all. It's not all, I mean, there's a lot.
I mean, it's, it's a, it's a lot.
Over the course of a year, it could, it could definitely accrue, but it's not been giving it three or four percent, but we're seeing huge returns.
Mm-hmm. Um, Counselor Hurst?
I think I lost my train of thought. So, so I will, um, if it comes back, I'll, I'll speak to it.
No, I was just going to say that I'll, I'll try to schedule a meeting with the school department to find out what their funding can be used for and if they're trying to restructure anything to be able to, you know.
Oh, that's what I was. I haven't had a conversation to trade off savings versus expenses. I have not had that conversation with.
Yeah, so, so. So yes, and they, and they, they ought to be just as willing to figure out how to do it. And I think, you know, part of the issue that we have is, um, you know, we, we want to hold on to ours. The school department probably doesn't want to give away any of theirs. And the question is, you know, how, how, how can we make it work knowing what is right? Um, and you know, they got three hundred million. I don't know, you know, what it is that they're spending their money on. Um, but it would seem to me that we ought to figure out how to get folks um, paid. Uh, and then the, the other thing is, I, I, listen, I appreciate you guys. Um, uh, TJ, Lindsay, um, I, I know we're asking you guys for a lot of information. Um, I think part of the reason why we end up having to ask you guys more is because once you give us something, more questions come up. Um, and I don't think it's your fault, but I.
I have an issue with that. Sometimes it's just not a simple, simple request as you hope it would be.
Yet, yet no, I, I understand that too TJ. I don't have, and, and again, I, I appreciate. Again, I, I appreciate the work that you guys are doing and the data that you're giving us. And I know that we're asking you for a lot. Um I think if things were a bit more transparent and not necessarily on your end. Then I wouldn't have to keep asking for more, but I think sometimes when you give us one thing. Um it, it, you know, my brain starts going and saying, hey, hey, well, what about this? And how do I really draw the conclusions that I need to draw um without asking for more? So I know you guys are busting your rear ends. I appreciate it. Um you know, and this, this is not, I'm sure not easy for anybody, cause I'm spending way too much time on this. Then I should be spending, um but I appreciate you guys on hearing.
No, I appreciate that. I mean, we'll, we'll continue to provide everything we can provide as quickly as we can provide it. Uh we'll let you know if it's not easily done. Uh I don't have an uh, a problem share and all the information, so.
And we always expect that more questions come out of the info we give you, so we.
Yeah, we definitely appreciate it. Um the hard work. We, we're all asking you for a lot, so it's not just me and Counselor Hurst. Like everybody.
I do appreciate the appreciation. I was. Thank you.
So, um just wanna let you know that your hard work isn't going unnoticed. Any other questions from counselors? All right, so sorry about the late start and thank you for.
Hey, it's all right. We, we figured it out, so.
And um TJ, I appreciate like if you don't have any updates, you letting me know.
Yeah.
So I can cancel to me.
Yeah, Mike, I have soccer's uh now on, on Thursday, so. I scouts Thursday nights for my son, so.
I remember that life. Don't miss it. Good luck.
Talk to you, talk to you both later.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.